Onto business from the city council. And at this time, before we get to our council members, I'd like to ask Steve, our city manager, Steve Krager, if you'd like to say a couple of words about the new year. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do have a few prepared words, but just a quick comment going back to the beginning of the meeting. Seeing the enthusiasm with which Officer Cooper is embracing his new role as sergeant, I think for many of us reassures us that we're in the right profession. It was just inspiring for me to see that. So, Honorable Mayor and council members, the new year is upon us, and I am excited for the future of Yuba City. A new bridge, new parks, and new commercial establishments are just part of what we have to look forward to in 2019. In support of this future is an organization that is second to none. Our community is blessed with a dedicated group of employees who work every day to advance quality service, innovation, and leadership in Yuba City. They carry with them an equal sense of pride in what they do and humility in knowing that they are on the search for continuous improvement in everything they do. With continuous improvement, both organizationally and personally, comes change. As much as it can be a very human tendency to resist change, we must recognize when it has arrived and choose to embrace it. In this specific regard, I choose the need for personal change. And so, I have chosen to transition from the position of city manager. I've had the good fortune of being part of this great organization for 19 years, and my departure is admittedly bittersweet. However, with change comes opportunity, and I eagerly look forward to the next chapter of my life, and will leave this organization with a feeling of excitement for the future. My last day with the city will be February 15th, 2019. That said, my commitment to the ongoing success of this organization remains, and I will assist your council to ensure a smooth transition. In closing, I will simply say thank you. Thank you to the many elected officials whom I have served over my career. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this community and the employees of this great organization. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
And thank you for everything, Steve. I know that probably did not come lightly, after a lot of consideration, of course, it's a surprise to all of us, but...
It was never, not intended to surprise. It was probably intended to share equally, and I just, I honor the role that you, as a council, have continued to vest in me. I see myself as serving as a shepherd of this organization. I inherited a great organization, and my job was to shepherd it along, and you know you have a great organization to take forward. So, as much as the person can change, this organization, we all know, will continue to be a great one. So, it's with that excitement, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you very much. You've been a wonderful steward of that role over there, and we wish you the best. All right. That being said, Councilman Boomgarden.
Wow.
Yep.
Having left the organization and having had a chance to work with you, well, let me back up. Having left the organization, I know it's difficult, and I'm at a loss for words, but I look forward to the opportunity to speak with you privately. Council reports. Continue to attend orientations from the various city departments, appreciate the meeting of the staff, their enthusiasm, and as the city manager has said, it is a quality organization with a lot of good people doing a lot of good things consistently. I've been gone for about nine, nine and a half years, and it's very welcoming to come back and see just the energy level that's out there. As far as attendance, I went to my very first LAFCO meeting. There, of note, was a continuance of some policies that LAFCO needs to adopt. There's a fair amount of new folks or new representatives on the LAFCO, so those were continued because the county had a few concerns as well, and those will be coming up at the next meeting. They did mention that there are two potential annexations on the west side of the city that may come to us during this calendar year, and as those make their way through, I'm sure we'll be made aware of those. Attended numerous swearing-in of Sutter County officials. They have been very welcoming and are very encouraged to continue a good working relationship with not only the city of Yuba City, but this city council, and I'm looking forward to working with them as well. And had an opportunity to attend the retirement of Supervisor Larry Munger on Saturday. I'm sure other council folks will talk about it up here. Larry Munger was a very, very important person to me during my career, a very fair man, a cooperator, and he leaves quite a legacy, but he's still in the community, so he's still accessible. With that, I thank you for the opportunity to share, and next.
Very good. Councilmember Espendola, what's been going on?
I also want to say, Steve, it's a surprise for me to know that you're leaving us, and the short amount of time that I've had the opportunity to work with you, I have really appreciated your talent, your compassion, your good heart. I see that, and so I'm a little off my game now thinking about you leaving us, so I just want to say that in advance. There have been many events that we've shared together and attended. I have, the meetings that I'm assigned to is with the homeless consortium and by-county homeless, and so I don't know if Councilman Cardosa will be speaking of that particular issue, so I attended that. Progress is being made. A strategic plan is being developed by the by-county homeless group, and so more to report in the future. One item that I would like to bring up through the mayor to further discuss, and I'm not asking for an action item or anything at this moment, but just an opportunity to talk about the process that we're in soliciting community members to apply for the boards and commissions, and the application deadlines were changed from December 2018 to this week, which is on this Friday. And our current process includes that our mayor and vice mayor screen the applicants, and in that, with a final candidate, it's being then brought forward to us in the second meeting in February. So what I'm requesting is for city staff to bring forth for the next February 5th meeting to hopefully look at some options in changing this traditional process that we currently have practiced, and allowing perhaps council members to contribute in the process and decision-making, and perhaps the city staff can look at how other jurisdictions are doing this locally, to see that things are being done somewhat consistently across the area and not differently, just here in the city. So, and I firmly believe that I think as an elected official, that we should have some sort of input in the candidates as they're selected, and it's an obligation to really be part of that entire process. So I'm bringing that forth for a discussion or a city, you know, for our city staff to bring additional information to us for the next meeting.
Okay, so you'd like to agendize a discussion for February 5th?
If you're open to having that.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so we would need three council members to, so we have one, we need two more to agree with that. Or in order to move forward, is that correct, sir?
So, from the normal procedure that we've practiced, so the council, if there's something that they desire, there's a desired adds to the agenda. You're exactly spot on, Mr. Mayor, that there would be the concurrence of two other council members. Taking a step, there may be just a request to have staff gather the information and present it to your council, whether or not Councilmember Espendola wants that to be formally presented on the 5th, or just made available to your council, and then you can analyze it and then bring it back for consideration in the future, based upon the analysis, and then decide whether or not you want something agendized. Or, council member, I don't want to put words in your mouth, if you feel you'd like it to be more pressing for the 5th, then that would be your recommendation.
If we can agendize it for the 5th, that would be...
Preferred?
Preferred.
Okay, so that way, we would need two more council members to concur with that.
Help me understand the policy. I know that having gone through that, it's two council people, typically the mayor and the vice mayor get together, and they do the screening. Do they do all the screening traditionally?
No, thank you, Mr. Boomgarden. That's, it needs to be clarified. So, with regard to boards and commissions, we, the, it's the mayor and the vice mayor who screen the candidates, and then it's upon the recommendation of the mayor to the council, and then it's dependent upon the concurrence of the council as a whole as to whether or not that person ultimately gets appointed. And I believe the question is, can we involve the more council members as part of the screening process rather than having the vetting occurred by the mayor and vice mayor? That's just traditionally the way we've done it. I don't believe there's anything necessarily in our code, but it is past practice, and then it's brought before your council as a whole for consideration. And frankly, there have been instances where the council as a whole have defer, pardon me, differed an opinion and said, no, we don't prefer to appoint that person to that commission as a recommendation of the mayor.
Thanks for that, through the mayor. Thanks for the explanation. I guess the interest, if I might, Councilwoman Espendola, is to be more involved with that process rather than just come to the point where you have to vote yes or no.
Correct.
Does either of you two esteemed gentlemen, can you weigh in on that process? I assume that once you get more than three of us, or once you get three of us, it's an open meeting.
Well, see, that's in the legal side. The city attorney can comment on that, but you're exactly right. The, having two council members have that ad hoc interview process allows for more intimate conversation, and it doesn't enter into this type of realm where you have people moving through, and there's also, we do a process, a background check on everyone as well. And so, that's currently part of that vetting process, that frankly, if someone doesn't pass a background, then they're not brought before your council, not that that is meant to be a hindrance to the process, but that's, once again, more of a background process before the public process occurs.
Through the mayor again, again, question for you, Councilwoman, is, do you want to be involved at the application screening process, or more involved in the actual interview process of the applicants?
I'm suggesting that we, well, first, it was my thought to have our staff look at other jurisdictions to understand how other jurisdictions are doing this, and if we were able to divide the review, that a group would, a paper screen, and then a group could interview. So, where it wouldn't be the entire council at one time.
It would not be?
No, not at one time.
Well, kind of already is not, all of us.
Go ahead.
But I think, again, if I might?
Yeah.
I think what I'm hearing is more involvement at the application process?
Exactly.
And then a screening committee of two, based upon a review of the applications and a rating by all five of us?
Correct.
So I go back, I go back up here to whether that's permissible or not?
If I may, one second, just if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
I think the application review process, I know as long as I'm sitting here, we'll go and interview everybody who qualifies. We have a set standard of qualifications already established, and I don't...
We do interview, we do. If you submit an application...
Everyone who qualifies, I'm, I'll interview them and give them a shot at it. You know, and if they do well, fine, we'll have a recommendation by less than all of us, and then, of course, they pass a background check. My concern with the idea of eventually getting somebody sitting here before all five of us, especially the youth commission, you're not going to have anybody apply. It's going to be tough, as far as the number of applicants that come in here. That's going to be a mental block for a lot of people, and I definitely, I'm kind of an informal guy, even though I'm sitting up here in the middle of the bench with a tie on. I think you can have a lot, you get to know somebody a lot better in an informal setting around the table in my office, and you can get a real feel for them as a person when they're not all dressed up standing in here with a microphone in their face.
Sir, let me jump out with, let me just jump out with a recommendation. I don't think that we're going to have the information and time to be able to address this round. The position's closed February, you know, January 18th, this Friday, so the clerk's office has got the process in going under, as it currently is. So I cannot foresee that you would by February 5th be able to make a policy change that would necessarily effectuate it for this round. What we can bring to you is, to Councilwoman Espendola's request, if you desire, is the package of information that says, this is how everybody else does it, and then at least you're going to be able to make an, have an informed conversation at that future meeting, be it on the 5th or be the following meeting, simply with the substance that says, this is how the surrounding organizations do it, and then you're going to be able to grasp on to the pros and cons of what others have experienced. I just have trepidation with this conversation continuing without us as staff being able to really give you good information to work off of, so.
And thanks for adding that, because I, having not experienced the process, newly elected, the idea that we have, you know, commissioners representing us, and as an example with recycling industry this evening, had discord in this, not that we had that process, so I would, I would say that what you said, Steve, was probably a better asking our staff, city staff, to put an analysis together, and so how do I remove my motion then, and then?
If you, if there are two other council members that reach the same consensus as your suggestion, then staff would be so directed to proceed in gathering that information. You know, that's, we work for the, or I work for the five of you, not individually, so it takes the majority of the council to say, we want staff resources to be invested in this area.
And Councilwoman, if I may, it doesn't take a formal motion, you just need three nods to three council members willing to do that, per the mayor being able to identify three people who are nodding and have a comfortable with that.
And just to clarify, if I may, now we're down to researching how other jurisdictions do it and provide that information back to us so we can decide if we want to move forward?
With the additional information that Steve just gave to us, which I was not aware of prior to...
I'm sorry, what was that that I provided?
Yeah, I don't remember either.
That it was, that we're too far along in this process to affect change.
Unless I look over at one Taralock who's usually overly ambitious in trying to meet every need of the city, but...
We can certainly do it, but it will delay the process probably till end of March.
Okay.
And the terms expire February 28th.
Generally, we don't want to have commissions or boards without people on them because it delays...
So we're back to looking into it for a year from now, if it even, if we change it?
That's what I suggest, sir.
I'm going to take the opportunity right now also to express my opinion that, especially with something like this, we can look into what other jurisdictions do, but that does not obligate us to do what they do. What works for us works for us regardless of what anybody else does, as long as we're within the, within law and we're fair.
That's a policy discretion of the council, sir. Correct.
That being said, do we have two other folks that would like to move forward with the recommendation?
I have no problem supporting Councilwoman Espendola's request for information.
Okay.
Yeah, and through the mayor, we're just, because we went full circle, and I'm down here, but this is basically exploratory. We want to see what everybody else does to see if there's a better way we can possibly do it in the future. That's really where we're heading.
That's where I ended up. I started with the agenda and then moved down to that.
Gotcha. Then I fully support Councilmember...
There's your three.
You got four.
Four. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like the rest of my fellow council members, I've been attending a lot of the swearing-in ceremonies and getting my committee assignments well in hand, and of those, most of the committees are still just seating the new members and getting the chairs and starting to move forward. There are two bits of information that I do want to bring back to you from a couple of the commissions and committees. The regional water authority, we need to make sure that it is on our radar with our new governor when it comes time for the budget, and we're looking at Prop 218 and the water rates. He has already proposed an additional tax on water, and he's proposed an additional tax on bottled water. So we've got to be conscientious of that when we start looking at rates. Likewise, there is a lot of issues with Prop 218 that needs to be cleaned up. Right now, there is nothing on the horizon to fix that, but the RWA is looking for someone to step up and basically legally challenge it to fix those issues which concerned, concern turnoff fees and things of that nature, and the actual rates itself. So, that's what we have coming out of there. No action, but we just need to have that on our radar. The other one is the new county oversight. We were formed for all the redistricting, is the spin-down from Governor Brown, and again, the new governor has indicated he wants to bring him back, so we're proceeding forward with the wind-up that's been going on for several years, but we also have the foresight that we may be a mute committee in six to eight months and be spinning it back the other way.
All right.
So those are the two things. Along those lines, you know, Mr. Krager, thank you so much for your years of service with the city. I know you've done a lot of good things over the years, and I want to say thank you personally. Also want to say, you know, what happens, the new kids on the block come in and you decide to leave the family, so, you know, I wish you the best, but it definitely caught us all by surprise tonight, so I do want to wish you the best. Mr. Mayor, I do want to bring up one other item, though, that I think that we need to press forward with, and I would like to request this council to look into. Did not want to go into it earlier this evening, but we have had miscommunication issues from our executive staff to the council, and I was completely caught off guard with the issue this, earlier this evening with the use permit from RI. Our executive team received that back on December 18th, which was the recusal, which was included in the public information. I found out about it Thursday. There's been several other things that has kind of fallen through the cracks, and I, in light of the new council, we got, more than 50% is brand-new. We have a brand-new city attorney. Now the light that we're probably going to have a new city manager, I think that this request is very timely. I would like for us to set a closed item agenda to set down with our city attorney, and in the interim, set down with Mr. Krager as our city manager, if we can do it by the 5th, with what our expectations are going forward, and as far as what we expect as a council, so that we can be clear with the information coming our way and working as a team to better serve the citizens. And I think it's going to be more important that we have that prior to Mr. Krager's February 15th departure, because we're going to be passing that information on to the interim city manager, whoever that might be, until we have a new city manager. So I think those expectations really need to be dialed in and set, and I would ask you to agendize a closed item session for this council to meet with our two employees.
All right. I think that'd also give us an opportunity to get your valuable institutional knowledge and input as to what you would like to see our expectations of your predecessor, your predecessor, not your predecessor.
Successor.
Successor, there you go.
I could tell you about the predecessor.
Yeah, I bet you can't.
Can't tell you yet about the successor.
Tough shoes to fill, for sure. So I think that's, like you said, timely and a good idea. I will be number two on that idea. Anybody have a number three? Actually, only, all you need is me at this point, so we'll do that. We'll go ahead and set an agendized item for a closed session at our next meeting.
To the mayor, if I could make one additional suggestion, given the announcement this evening, perhaps we could also add an agenda, a closed session item for the appointment of an interim or acting city manager. We have a process in place to deal with that, but it would at least provide an opportunity for the council to provide feedback and get input from Mr. Kruger regarding that particular issue.
That was on my list right here, exactly. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Cardosa.
Yep, Steve, totally caught me off guard. It's been wonderful working with you for many years, many years. We're going to miss you, and starting off, we'll start off New Year's morning, polar bear plunge. Yeah, it was a brisk morning, very, the north wind was blowing pretty good, so Mayor Harris, Councilmember Espendola was there to watch me jump in the pool. We had 25 sign up and only 18 jumped in. A few of them didn't show up because of the cold wind, so the water was 42 degrees, and it wasn't bad, but when you ran across the pool to get in the building, the cold wind made it down to 30. So that was a real fun time, we had a great time, took pictures. It was a great time for New Year's morning. Like I said, we did, we had quite a few swearing-ins with county and superintendent of schools. I'm just going to mention our three new Yuba City police officers, Officer Ernest, Kowski, and Minks. We were there for their swearing-in. We all went to the Chamber Gala last Friday night, was a wonderful time, had a great time. Also, attended Larry Munger's retirement party, and I had the honor of meeting President Nielsen. He is the president of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. Sunday, excuse me, in Chico, wonderful man. He had more security than President Trump. He was a very important man. It was a great honor to meet him, and then last but not least, I have the honor of being on the, I'm an association board member for our community memorial museum of Sutter County. Another little fun thing to do in the community, and I'm very happy and honored to be on that also, and with that, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ray. Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry.
A lot has already been said. I was at the polar bear plunge, too. I got to push my foster son in there, so that was great. But, Secoc, I tell you what, we have former council member Buckland here in the audience, and he told me, I said, boy, it's going to be like drinking from a fire hose, and he goes, nope, it's going to be like drinking from a fire hydrant, and you are not kidding, my friend. So I am still adjusting to that. We have another meeting on Thursday, but you're also correct in the fact that there is a group of good, smart people. So I'm looking forward to feeling your very large shoes, sir, and doing the best I can in my role for the city.
You'll do a remarkable job.
Thank you very much, sir. That is a very big job. Also, I'm a member of Subuca now as well, which is going to be great, a lot of work there. We are going to miss Mike and Aminah, who we awarded or recognized tonight. I'm back to Dr. Nelson from the, he's the LDS president. What an honor that was. I don't happen to be of that specific faith, however, I think Darren mentioned to me that he, they consider him to be the prophet for everybody, and when you, when you stand, I got to chat with him quasi-privately for about 90 seconds, him and his wife, and you can sense it, and when you shake his hand, you look into his eyes, what a terrific opportunity, and I will never, ever forget that. So Darren, thank you for the suggestion, thank you for ensuring that I got right in. I was a little bit late for some personal issues going on, but, and you know, also, I want to recognize, you know, he's the leader of your church, and you would have had an opportunity to meet him, and you gave that up so I could. I respect that. Thank you very much. So, one thing we're going to do is we're going to attend a League of California Cities Conference, all, pretty much most of us, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday down in Sacramento. That's, we're looking forward to some good productive information for that. Larry Munger's retirement was great, and then also, we are going to have a candlelight vigil for Officer Natalie Corona from Davis Police Department, who was killed, murdered in the light of duty on January 10th. That will be tomorrow at the police department. That will be tomorrow at the police department, rain or shine, at seven-thirty at night. If it is raining, go go around through the open gate, and we're going to go into the awnings in the carport area, so we can still light candles, we're technically still outside. So hope to see all, if not most, of you there tomorrow. With that being said, I would like to close in honor of Officer Corona tonight. Thank you very much.